Medford City Council Administration and Finance Committee, January 30th, 2024. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Collins.
President.
Counsel Lozaro.
President.
Counsel Lenning.
Present.
Counsel Seh.
Present.
President Behrs.
Present. Five present, uh, yes. Yes, five present and non-absent meetings called to order, and we welcome Counsel Callahan, as all counselors are welcome at all committee meetings, as they are technically all committees of the whole, but the voting members are the ones who were called, the role was called for. So this is our Administration and Finance Committee meeting. It's our first standing committee meeting under the new committee meeting structure. So it's an exciting time. The action and discussion items for tonight are the same as for our other committees, which is the governing agenda document that was amended at the January 24th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting, taking a look at that in more detail and more depth, looking at each of the items, projects, major projects, ordinances, and other oversight and engagement items on the governing agenda. And also, some papers in committee have made it on to the agendas for these meetings. Mostly, these are the ones from 2022 and prior. There may be papers in committee from 2023 that haven't made it on here yet. And then there's also items on the governing agenda document that may have not made it on to papers in committee yet. Hopefully, committee chairs can work with folks in the clerk's office and over the next meeting or two, as the standing committees start to meet, we can flush this out, get all of the different papers that have been referred to all of the different committees onto the agendas, and then both the agenda and the tracking document in the clerk's office will be a great place for folks to look and see what has been referred to committee, what is kind of sitting on the table in committee for future discussion. So that's the intent here to start. I am hoping this will be somewhat of a model for tomorrow night's meetings and for meetings in two weeks for standing committee chairs. It's really just to get our feet wet, start with the committee, look at everything that's been referred out to us or that the council has said, hey, we think the committee's going to be working on this, and then we can, uh, can go from there. But as the Subcommittee on Licensing, Permitting, and Signs will probably soon be aware, there are some things that are going to come up a little faster than that. So we'll be getting our feet wet and doing some sort of business at the same time. So on action discussion items, 24-006 Resolution that each council committee review the 2024-2025 council governing agenda as amended at the January 24th, January 24th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting. So I have here, and I'll share my screen. Copy of that document. And if folks looked at the digital packets for this meeting, you'd see there's like kind of a lot of supporting materials. We'll figure out exactly the format in which these agendas are going to look like or the packets are going to look like in the future, because right now they're including all of the supporting materials even for items that are, that are just on the table in the papers in committee, and that has created some pretty long agendas, so we may not want to have the packets look like that. But for this document, we're here in the Administration and Finance Committee, and we had a few items that we discussed. We had major projects, the annual budget process, revenue generation slash proposition two and a half, classification and compensation study implementation. We had ordinances, budget ordinance, commercial vacancy tax, good landlord tax credit local option, community benefits agreement ordinance, percent for art ordinance, paid family medical leave, extended illness leave bank. And we also had some oversight and engagement around financial review and long-term budget planning and forecasting, and reviewing relevant city ordinances and regulations. So we have that from the governing agenda we can take a look at in a minute. We also had some papers in committee from previous councils. We had a paper from 2017 about a municipal mini-bonds program. There's a paper from 2019, a recommendation to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 71, Section 37m, which is about school committee, school department, and city side sharing different financial and other staff. There's a resolution from 2020 that the council hired additional legal services. One of my resolutions to create a draft ordinance for a pilot commission is on payment in lieu of taxes. A draft ordinance around the extended illness leave bank, that's in the governing agenda. Resolution on state paid family medical leave program, and a resolution to draft a budget ordinance for the city of Medford. So that was just some of the stuff from the papers in committee as well, but that, I think, is a, is a general scope of everything that this committee is planning to take a look at this term. And I'm interested in folks, you know, new members may have questions about prior, some of these papers in committee from prior councils, or really just what folks are thinking, you know, first glance, first thought, looking at the, uh, at the governing agenda and the agenda for this meeting. What are our questions? What are things we need to dig in deeper for? Are there, you know, requests for additional information or records from prior meetings that we want to kind of get on the table and make sure that everyone has all the information they need as we move forward? Counsel Lozaro.
Um, as far as the papers that are in committee from prior councils, prior years, um, how do they come forward to be discussed as part of this committee?
So anything that's on here, someone could motion right now to kind of bring up one of these items, and if we wanted to take some sort of formal action on it, I think even just the fact that they're on the agenda, that we're, you know, we're able to just talk about them, that's kind of the idea around this, is committees could take up items that are on the table as needed. But also, you know, you could, as we've done on some of our regular meeting agendas already, the chair of the committee could say, hey, okay, I want to talk about the budget ordinance this, this meeting, this month. So I'm taking that from the papers in committee, and I'm moving that to the action and discussion item section of the agenda, and, you know, you could kind of have that ready to be discussed at a meeting.
Sorry, can I?
Yeah.
There, there is sort of an idea around the timing of things, though, right? With the conversations we've been having about spreading stuff out.
Yeah.
So do you have a thought in mind about how we should structure our kind of priorities for bringing up the? What I'm, uh, what I'm getting at is I would like to see the background on all of this stuff, all of the stuff from the, the stuff that's, uh, tabled or in committee. I'd like to see all the background on this. Um, and, uh, but I don't want to try to see everything immediately, especially as, you know, we have these, especially like the extended illness bank, I know the paid family medical leave being something that we're going to sort of think about talking about 2025, right?
Yeah.
So, but, uh, those, those are things that I think are important. So, yes.
Yeah, I think, I, no, I get what you're saying. I think like, there's kind of two pieces of it, asking for the background information, pulling the records, et cetera. That's one thing. Once it's done, that can then be held for when it will be discussed, so like, we can kind of get folks up to speed. And then, you know, actually saying, oh, I want to discuss this, I think the chairs would probably follow in some sense these timelines that we've come up with. But I think it's good to get out there like earlier rather than later, rather than like, you know, we're two weeks ahead of the meeting when we want to talk about paid family medical leave, and it's like, oh, when did the council discuss this? What if, you know, put out those requests for information maybe, and we can work through the clerk's office, or even make requests to the administrative staff to provide input if they, if they have it. And then we have this paper record that builds up, uh, and then is available once we actually get into the discussion period. I think we're also just going to figure this out as we move along, because it's definitely, you know, usually what would happen is be like, oh, okay, we're going to talk about this in a week or two, let's add, let's immediately ask everyone to drop everything and start pulling research and papers from, or asking for opinions and stuff like that. So I think, you know, we're kind of trying to figure that one out a little bit too, at least from my standing. I don't know if other counselors have thoughts on that, or have thought about that, how they're going to handle that for their own committees. Not seeing any right now. So yeah, um, you know, I think going through this, we're going to be looking at the budget ordinance relatively soon. That's something I'm working with the administration to schedule for next month's meeting on February 27th. So that's, that's one of the top priorities. We also had some stuff around revenue generation, classification and compensation study, annual budget process, kind of to start the year. Counsel Lenning.
Just in, uh, from, from what you can remember in previous terms on council, do you know the, would you be able to offer the reason that some of these were left in committee so long? So if there's anything that, if there's anything specific comes to mind, just to offer the historic context for that or a reason it just kind of dwindled? Is there any, is there anything that you know about personally?
Yeah, and, and counselors, Collins, and saying, feel free to chime in here. So for some of these, you can kind of see, the in-city council is the date that it was submitted, you know, what regular meeting, so you could, and I tried to pull the records for most of these as best as I could and attach them in the digital packet. But in-city council is, is when it was proposed initially, and then in-committee is whenever a committee meeting was held on those issues, or if it was referenced or discussed in a committee meeting. So you can see that some ideas, you know, to be honest, I think some of this is purely organizing, like things, there had just been stuff going back all the way to 2016, 2017, papers in committee that had never had a committee meeting on them, hadn't really been discussed. I know this municipal mini-bonds program is, uh, was proposed by Counsel Caraviallo, but even from the resolution, I'm not 100% sure what its intent was, and at this point it's seven years old. But some of the other ones were mine, and I can certainly provide context on that. The pilot commission, we had some early meetings on it, there is a draft ordinance somewhere, but just hasn't been made a priority in the last two councils to advance that ball. So it's just one of those things that's sitting with some amount of work done, and if we want to pick it up, we could move it forward. Paid family medical leave, we had a discussion with the finance department in November 2022 about what the cost would look like. It's in the $500,000 to $600,000 a year range, so not, and that's to cover all city and school employees. And then there's a range of, does the city just do the minimum that's required by the state program, or does it, uh, pay 100% of the premium, et cetera? And there's just kind of a budget range there, but we basically got the cost estimate, and we haven't met on it since then. I think some of the reason for that is, is there $600,000 in the budget to start that program or not, you know, or would the mayor want to appropriate that? There's some, some bigger questions there, because technically the way the law is written, the council could just enter the program. It's our, it's within our authority to adopt, to enter the state paid family medical leave program under Mass General Law, but then, of course, that creates a cascading impact on, um, I think, under my reading of it, and I don't know if council's reading would be the same, we could join it. The, the city would have to program it, it would have, would have to enter the program, and then would the money be there, or would there have to be cuts in other parts of the budget to fund that program? I, I don't know. So there wasn't like a general consensus agreement that this is something we should do in the short term with the administration, so it kind of sat in committee. And then the budget ordinance, you can see here, we met on five times in 2023, and there's committee reports attached to the agenda, as well as I think the latest track changes, versions of the ordinance were attached to the agenda packet, on digitally, not in print, because I, this was a 74-page print packet, if, I figured, maybe we don't all want that anymore. But if you look at the PDF, it's in there. And the administration is, is, the last thing we left that in December is we're waiting for the response from the administration, which they're planning to send over to us in the next couple of weeks, and then we can meet on that in, as one item for our, our February meeting. Counsel Seh.
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I think, I think that pretty much runs through most of the, the things that at least we dealt with on our council term last time. There are two, two of the papers in committee I've done a little bit of looking into, in terms of what they are. So the mini-bonds program that Counsel Caraviallo introduced, the intention behind that was essentially, um, some level in Cambridge have these programs where they work with a company called Neighborly to provide $1,000 bonds for residents to, uh, to borrow money, basically, partake in bond, buying those bonds, and essentially use that money to, for home repairs, sidewalk repairs, infrastructure-related stuff mostly. Theoretically, you could use it for other things, but the company that they do, do it through, so the precedent that is set in Massachusetts is basically very much focused on, um, on like small repairs along that scale. The second paper listed, um, accepting the provisions of Mass General Law, 71, Section 37m, that one is about consolidating, um, giving the city option to consolidate administration across school, the, the school side of things, the metro public schools and the city side of things. That one would require a vote of the school committee, the city council, and the mayor's approval on it. So that one's much more involved and would require, um, essentially would require us to work with the school committee on the issue and to get everyone to a place where we agree. It was introduced back then because there was a desire to essentially make, to have the security director of the public schools the same as the security director of the city, so essentially to combine, um, like, kind of building security administration. Obviously, it just never got moved forward, maybe because of how involved the idea is, but that's just a bit of context on those two, on these two points. And I think Zach, or President Behrs, covered the rest pretty well. I guess I'll, I'll, I'll continue talking to, 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 to President Behrs a little bit more time.
Sorry, sorry. The clerk is informing me on how these were disposed of in the meeting in 2019. Yeah, so this, this, this was not advanced out of committee, the proposal, this is a proposal by the mayor, Mayor Burke, to do the security director thing.
Yeah. Um, slight, kind of moving on very slightly, but still tied to an item in this list of papers in committee. Your proposal for a draft ordinance for the pilot commission is an idea that I think would be, is very compelling for a city. It's definitely a need, especially when we think about how our pilot, number one, how our pilot negotiations have historically turned out, and number two, how they're carried out in execution. I think it pairs really well with Counsel Collins and my idea on the community benefits agreement ordinance. I think there's a lot of overlap there, but also the community benefits agreement ordinance talks a little bit more about how to basically spend the, um, the benefits that we receive through those pilot agreements. And so I, I think moving forward, it would be nice to pair those two efforts together.
Great, thank you, Counsel Seh. So that's some good context, and, and I did try to pull and figure out how to better distribute this information, and, and you can see here, this is a, we're hoping soon to be able to use this online portal for agenda and records, can see kind of how convenient it is. You can go and get a meeting overview and see the attachments for each item, lots of attachments for the budget ordinance, but it does help organize some of these files in, in my, at least for me. So yeah, as noted, budget ordinance, that's something we're looking at for our February 27th meeting. The other three items that we're looking at early here are the fiscal 25 annual budget process, classification and compensation study and implementation, revenue generation and prop two and a half planning. So, you know, for the FY 25 annual budget process, I think it would be good for folks to look at the draft budget ordinances. I think we're, we're, we are relatively close on the timing of each spring, what the budget process will look like. The lingering questions on the budget ordinance more have to do with longer-term financial planning. I don't know if Counsel Collins or Counsel Seh, if you want to add more specifics, having been on that subcommittee, as to what's outstanding around the budget ordinance. Counsel Coll, Vice President Collins.
Thank you. Yeah, um, I, I think that looking over the, kind of the evolution of the draft ordinances will be most instructive for the newer counselors, but the original form of the ordinance spoke to both the annual budget process and also laid out a fairly prescribed structure for long-term budget planning, kind of revisiting, um, a five-year financial forecast, regular intervals with the administration, the same way as it creates a structure for looking at the annual operating budget with the administration every year. The administration has told us a lot about the various reasons why that is a difficult thing for them to operationalize at this point, but we still think that there's value in creating a kind of starter structure for how to begin to have those conversations in a structured, regular way, even if we are not being as ambitious as the original form of the ordinance laid out. So to me, that is the most unfinished part of the ordinance, trying to figure out what can we start so that we are, you know, planting a seed for that kind of structure while not legislating a process that the administration right now doesn't have the capacity to do every year.
Great, yeah, so I think that'll be, you know, something for us to, to take a look at, the, the track changes versions as part of the digital packet. When we get a response from the administration, that we, the clerk will forward that along to the council. And then we will be able to start probably in, you know, I believe the first dates in that are in, in March, and in March for us to start looking at the fiscal 23, sorry, fiscal 25 budget, um, probably get some initial financial updates from the finance department, and start having meetings with departments around what we're looking at in terms of the fiscal 25 budget. So that'll be one, one item off the top of the list, and I think the goal is also to pass the budget ordinance around the same time that that process will start. Counsel Lozaro.
Just a procedural question, so do we need to do anything about the budget ordinance for this, from this committee before it can go to the regular meeting on the 27th?
So that, that'll be in this meeting on the 27th, so it'll be the?
Oh, this meeting?
Yes.
This is going to happen on February 27th again, and we'll talk about the budget ordinance, and then move it out, and then we'll talk about it in the regular meeting in March, probably.
Yeah, and this is, this is where we, um, I think we have red lines, so you can see in here, there's some pretty significant edits to the, to the initial proposal. But, you know, we get city council, uh, so we'll have some stuff that we need to start doing in, in March to get recommendations out to the administration. We're going to be getting a schedule of preliminary budget meetings, April 15th to May 15th with department heads. Mayor and the finance director are going to provide an estimated budget allocation to the metro public schools by March 1st. And so there's going to need to be kind of a shot clock checklist here, and it may well be that we're going to be, we may well be discussing, now that I'm reading this, some of our budget recommendations on the, at the 20, on the 27th as well. So, um, and this is, I was hoping we'd be done in December so that we'd have a kind of clear locked-in timeline, but we're still negotiating some final details. But then we will get the comprehensive budget proposal by May 31st, and that will contain some additional information that we are, um, we're hoping for. One of the things that we really were discussing would be a huge benefit, I think, to the council and the public, is to see in each department budget just a top-line number. Let's say that the fire department budget is increasing by $1 million, how much of that is because of fixed cost growth, and how much of that is actually something new? You know, is it just contracts have gone up, and the cost of X has gone up, and Y has gone up, and that million-dollar increase is really just paying for something that we already have? Or is there actually a new position, or a new program, or something else that is, is being funded in the budget? Because I think when we talk about biggest budget ever, every year, I mean, yes, it's the biggest budget every year because inflation is going up every year, so, you know, is it really historic? Or is it actually just keeping up with inflation? So that's, we're, we're going to have some budget-related stuff hitting us relatively soon in February, at least the budget ordinance, and maybe some, some additional stuff beyond that, but there'll be fair warning to the committee and to counselors who aren't on the, voting members of the committee as well. The classification and compensation study, I don't know if Counsel Collins, Counsel Seh, if you want to speak to that at all. No. Basically, Vice President Collins.
Well, I know that the, this is something I was actually going to ask about President Behrs, which is why I grimaced after I touched my microphone. The classification and compensation study is a project that the administration initiated with the Collins Center, if I have that right to take a look at, how we are compensating the various roles in city hall to try to get context on if, if things are roughly right, you know, and this is, would inform the types of salaries that we're putting out in our attempt to keep positions filled by competitive candidates. So a question that I have is the status on how complete that study is, and then I believe that the implementation for this council would be in, because pay rates, to an extent, live in our code of ordinances, personnel ordinances, that would be something for us to take out of the study and, you know, implement through our personnel ordinances.
Yeah, that's pretty much my understanding. I think, you know, something that might be valuable would be to put out a, a motion to just request an update on when we can expect the study from the Collins Center, and then we could get, you know, we could start reviewing that in earnest, and how we can assist in the implementation process of updating the personnel ordinance, and kind of what the timeline is on the administration side for when we can do that. Counsel Lenning.
Well, I was just going to comment that the city's had a couple of new hires even ever since January for a number of positions that I, I thought they were waiting to hear back on that compensation study before they moved forward with hiring them. So, I mean, is it, is it possible that some portion of it was already complete, like for, like, there, there are just like a lot of new hires, like for senior-level positions and like the, just across city hall that we've been informed about recently? So clearly, some compensation, uh, some, some agreement about compensation must have been reached with or without the study.
Yeah, so the positions are paid, um, there's a thing called a CAF. CAF is an acronym for something. It is not an acronym for?
Nobody knows, nobody knows.
Right. Right, yes, it's, it's, the CAF does not line up with compensation and classification, but that's basically, um, yeah, something, in any case, um, the CAFs, and they're, and they're not just CAFs, CAFs are one of the, actually several structures, are the tiers that the jobs sit in for like what their compensation can be, and those are technically ordinances. So whatever the jobs were posted at, whatever CAF that they're in, CAF 13 being, you know, X amount of dollars to X amount of dollars, there's ranges and steps within them. Those people are basi, basically what I'm saying is the people who were hired for those positions are working at whatever the CAF says, that whatever CAF that position is in right now, and there's not really a lot of room for negotiation, other than maybe people can come in at a higher step of a CAF, for example. So I don't know what the administration, I don't, I actually don't know what, for example, what step of what CAF the economic development director was hired at, but it's not kind of an open negotiation. So that's basically what this is. My understanding is it's looking at the, the CAF structure for city employees, there's also a public works set of classifications and compensation tiers for public works employees, and there's a couple of other ones as well, and looking at those and saying, is, are these competitive? Is this, are we going to be able to bring in, you know, are there positions that are sitting empty because their, their compensation is too low, or they're, they're at too low of a CAF level? That used to be available on MuniCode. If you go back to the 2017 MuniCode, you can see what the CAFs were in 2017. We've been working to try to get that back on MuniCode so that it's, you can see that part of the ordinance online, and the administration has, has basically, you know, said, what we have now and what is existing is not in a condition that we'd want to upload it to MuniCode, so we want to do the study and create the new CAF structure, and then that's when we'll put that back on to the, the city ordinances. But I, and I believe you have to go to the HR department to request the, the CAF. Yeah, it's, it's, it's the ordinance, that's one ordinance that's not maintained in the clerk's office right now, so the only one, the clerk reminds me. So that's kind of how that is all working, and basically, that's why it's so important that we know when we get a timeline back from the administration. This has been going on for, I think the first time we heard about this study was a couple of years ago, it may have even been before the last term. I kind of remember. I kind of remember Chief of Staff, former Chief of Staff, Dave Rodriguez mentioning it, so sometime in 2021.
Motion to request an update on the classification and compensation study?
Motion by Counselor Lemming to request an update on the classification and compensation study. Do we want to put a time when we would like that?
March.
I, I see like four different ideas. I'm gonna go to Counselor Zaro, Vice President Collins, Counselor Singh.
I was just seconding.
Okay, just seconding, Vice President Collins.
I was going to suggest perhaps to request the update come in a week before our next scheduled meeting of this committee.
Okay.
Which would be by February twentieth, if we go that route.
Yeah, I was gonna advise similarly.
Okay, so on the motion of Counselor Lemming to request an update on the classification and compensation study, seconded by Counselor Zaro, as amended by Counselor Collins, did that update come by February twentieth? Great, and we'll hold that till the end of the meeting. Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes, as amended. So, okay, great, so we'll get an update on that, we'll have budget ordinance update for the next meeting. In terms of revenue generation, Proposition Two and a Half Planning, and I'm happy to go over it in more detail if requested, but there was an agreement, a budget agreement reached by President Morrell and I with the mayor for the fiscal twenty-four budget, and included a variety of outcomes, one being, we'll talk about the budget ordinance, which we've been doing, another one being the creation of a financial task force, which would consist of members of the city council and the school committee and the city's finance administration. There have been two or three preliminary meetings of that task force, and further meetings are immediately forthcoming to essentially say, this is the group, this is what its charge is, this is what its timeline is. So I'm a member of that task force, the vice president, the vice chair of the school committee, the finance director, the mayor, and so essentially, that's, that's the group that's been meeting right now. We're gonna figure out an announcement of that group in a more formal way with specific deadlines and timelines and thoughts. So when it comes to the revenue generation and Prop Two and a Half Planning, the initial phase of that, I know that's an eighteen-month project on this agenda, but the initial phase is stemming from that budget agreement, and there should be some more public information about that in the next month or so, I would say, and then that can kind of start to inform discussions that we need to have in this committee, discussions that the school committee's going to need to have around what's looking like right now, the MSBA process for the high school, what are our urgent operating budget needs, what are other major capital projects, and how do we want to fund those, looking at debt exclusions or operating budget overrides? So more to come on that. Once that releases out, I'm sure there'll be lots of questions and discussion. If folks do want to talk about that in more detail, I'm happy to answer some more questions about the budget agreement, Counselor Zaro.
I would just say that the, it feels like everything follows from whatever that announcement is gonna be, like, none of the rest of this stuff can happen until we have a clear timeline on, a, a, a clear description of all of the larger amounts of money that may be coming down the pipe for us. So I think the greater transparency and the greater clarity we can have to share with the public, the sooner, the better. I don't, I feel like I don't know, so I feel like people, just general Medford residents aren't, don't know anything. So I'm eager, I'm, I'm excited and eager to hear more about that. When do you think that announcement will be made?
I am hopeful by mid-February.
Great.
It won't be like, this is what we're doing announcement as much as it does a, this is what we're talking about doing announcement, but-
That's something.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
And I think too, it's probably fair to say it would not be, likely would not be impactful on the fiscal twenty-five budget discussion, just given the timelines that would be needed to pass an override vote, for example. At least a good chunk of fiscal twenty-five. So we have a, a number of other items on here that are not starting until next year or looking at, you know, may start, but any discussion on finance review, forecasting, commercial vacancy tax, good landlord tax credit? Has anyone taken a look at the ordinances relevant to this committee and said, there's something, you know, seen something that they really want to update? I'm gonna Counselor Lemming.
Yeah, just, it just seems like in general, with a lot of, a lot of the larger projects, those are, those can be a little bit more difficult to pass forward in themselves without, because like they're affected by outside factors, but for some of the, some of the smaller things on this that are going to be pushed ahead by individual councilors, so I know it was Counselor Collins that proposed the good landlord tax credit at the last meeting, and I submitted for consideration at the upcoming meeting a resolution on the commercial vacancy tax. Those seem like they can be pushed ahead, sort of whenever there is time to do so at the admin and at these meetings, barring progress on some of the, some of the need to do, things like the annual budget process and revenue generation, Prop Two and a Half Planning. So I'm talking to, with, with regards to the vacancy tax specifically, I'm talking to some folks at the planning office about sort of best practices for doing that, but of course, that also does need, that would also need to be voted on at the next regular meeting, should, should it pass there, so.
To be referred to, yeah. Great, and I want to throw out just one other idea, and it just kind of, it's been percolating in my head. The vacancy tax, the good landlord credit, looking at the residential exemption, looking at a potentially expanded exemptions, and the Municipal Empowerment Act that the governor just filed, and how much of that will pass? It might be worth having kind of a, you know, this, this question around the financial task force and revenue generation is, is a full-scope discussion around the scale of additional revenue needs. I think the questions around the landlord tax credit, residential exemption, maybe even commercial vacancy tax, depending on how we can do that, are kind of distributional questions about like, how should the burden be shouldered, and how should that be changed? So there might be kind of like two big bucket conversations around, we know we need more, this is what we're prioritizing for larger new revenue, but also there's a bunch of ideas floating around about using the tax system, the structure generally around the property tax to incentivize different behaviors and to distribute burdens differently. So that could be kind of one of those discussions, as you were noting, that since they all kind of impact each other, and, yeah. You wanna?
Yeah, just, just out of a question coming from a very new counselor, so how long, what, what would you, I know that I'm seeing the timelines on this, on the, the actual calendar there, but, so how long, just taking the commercial vacancy tax, the good landlord tax credit, which are two very new proposals, would you estimate it, it takes from going to that first resolution to somebody potentially paying that tax or receiving a tax benefit from that, like in, you know, on the ground in real life, and actually putting that into the budget?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, and I think that's why it might be good to bring in the assessor as well and have some conversations there. I don't know what the mechanism of the vacancy tax would be, and if it's some sort of charge on, on the, on your two-and-a-half levy bill or something. Basically, if there's anything that's related to rate setting of the, of the property tax levy, those discussions need to happen well in advance of the December rate-setting discussion. Like, we just had one in December, I think several folks were there, councilors-elect at the time were there, but I think, you know, for residential exemption, Ted and Ellen before Ted has said, you know, I need two extra assessors and I need six to twelve months to set that up. So that's a big one. I don't know if good landlord is maybe a little more targeted, or if you want to do those both at the same time, so you might be looking at certainly the next rate setting in December twenty-twenty-five for some of the simpler stuff, like if there's a bigger exemption for seniors, you know, that's an easier one to kind of work out because we already have that in existence. I would guess if we're talking about like, the residential exemption combined with a good landlord tax credit, just like trying to tweak the whole distributional structure of the levy, probably December twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five, sorry, I'm getting my years, I'm ahead a year, I'm getting my fiscal years and calendar years confused, but December twenty-four and December twenty-twenty-five, depending on the scale, and then again, the vacancy tax, I'm not as sure on because I don't know what the mechanism is. If it's like, if it's something separate, maybe it's something that can move faster because it's outside of all of the complexities of rate setting for Proposition Two and a Half, for how Prop Two and a Half requires us to set the levy.
Well, I, with, with the commercial vacancy tax, I don't like, I don't think it would be, the, it, it would, you know, if it were implemented, it would specifically apply to vacant or effectively closed storefronts, and so, and the, the number, the number of businesses that that would apply to would be very, very small, like compared to the number that would be applied to the good landlord tax credit, which could be, you know, hundreds of people around town, so that would be, so I, it would be, it would be much more targeted, and I think, and it wouldn't be enough to, to significantly affect it, like the, the total tax levy from, so it, it's more of, it's more of an incentive and not a revenue generating mechanism.
We have a member of the public. You might need to press, yeah.
William Navarre, one oh eight Medford Street, apartment would be. I wanted to chime in about the commercial vacancy tax and say one thing about that, and that is that I do not think that Prop Two and a Half would affect that because Prop Two and a Half is a limit on ad valorem taxes, whereas a vacancy tax, I suspect, would not be an ad valorem tax based on the assessment, but rather something else. So I just wanted to say that. That's the way Prop Two and a Half is structured, is it's based on, is it an ad valorem tax, a tax upon the value? Thank you.
Great, so-
Although I'm not sure how much, how much it's, we're able to discuss something that hasn't been referred to committee, so if there's a, just, yeah, just pointing that out.
Yeah, I mean, it's on, it's in the governing agenda document, which, so, and that's what we're supposed to be reviewing, but yeah, we can, we can hold the details until it's formally been referred and until we have some people other than us doing our best, yes. Vice President Collins, first time I've gotten that right.
Thank you, yeah, I think, I think it's an important point to make, I mean, in general, I think the, the point of these initial meetings and committees, the point of the governing agendas, to try to budget our work over this term to be manageable for, for councilors and for projects to occur in, you know, the right order to be most effective. I think that the way that, like, the various, the commercial vacancy tax, for example, these various exemptions that we've considered in the past, the new ones that we're considering, the way that those will intersect with a potential override or debt exclusion is kind of an interesting problem, kind of to the overall topic of like, then what order do we do things in? Especially with the exemptions, which we know the assessor's office requires like a fairly long runway to be able to implement. I think that, I mean, for myself, for the good landlord tax credit, as that's a paper that I introduced, I think that the approach may be to study the issue, try to get, do the research, have the conversations, get our ducks in a row, perhaps like create some scenarios, and then as the conversations about revenue forecasting, potential changes to property tax because of a debt exclusion or override, kind of have some scenarios ready to go, and of course, I think in, in some cases, we might want to deploy several strategies at the same time, if, for example, say we're doing a debt exclusion for a new high school hypothetically, it, it occurs to me that that might be a thing that our finance department might say, let's sit down and consider these, you know, three to four financial mechanisms together, instead of doing these very related things in, in separate channels. But I think that we can certainly pursue all of these projects in committee and really get our arms around the issue and study, could maybe create a set of if-then conditions for these various exemptions and, and new mechanisms.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Any other further thoughts or discussion on what the committee's gonna be looking at over the next twenty-three months?
Can you put the screen to your back up?
Sure.
For just a sec.
Counselor Singh?
I think the only thing I would maybe want to add to this timeline at this point is make sure, to make sure that the draft pilot ordinance gets some time in there as well. We can talk about whether we talk, kind of, I, I, as you were saying, you know, we have these buckets of work to work on, that, you know, ideas are different, but possibly very similar genres of work. We could look at community benefits ordinance, not being, putting it in the pilot or something.
Thank you, Counselor Singh. Give me one second here. You want to look at the, the draft timeline again?
Yeah, just to basically, how the pilot ordinance gets some slack off.
Sounds like there's a motion from Counselor saying to add-
Motion, motion to add the-
The pilot ordinance to the governing agenda? Got it. On the motion of Counselor saying to add the pilot ordinance to the governing agenda, seconded by Vice President Collins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And Counselor Collins, you wanted this back up?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a look, see if there's anything else we're getting. I think in general, I feel pretty happy with the draft timeline that we're looking at here in the governing agenda. I think that this, for the most part, organizes our projects in what I would consider, like, list of priority and also list of disurgency. It's very important to start implementing the classification and compensation study as soon as that data becomes available. It's, of course, the annual budget process is fixed in the first half of each year. I think it is, will be, I think for the reasons we just discussed, it'll be important to discuss the commercial vacancy tax and the good landlord tax credit earlier rather than later, so that if those are things that we do want to deploy, we can do that at a time that makes sense because they take a long time to implement. I think that that will set us up well for these other projects that we currently have slated for 2025, which of course are also very important, that's why they're up there, that's why they've been suggested by current councilors, former councilors, members of the community, but I think that this roughly follows order of need.
Any further discussion? Any questions, any thoughts? Any comments from members of the public in the chamber or on Zoom? Seeing no one in the chamber to, standing at the podium and seeing no hands on Zoom, I think we are, we're at an end.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Vice President Collins to adjourn, seconded by Counselor Lemming. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes and the meeting is adjourned.